Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission of May 5, 2014. My name is Ted Tucker. I'm sort of as president of the commission. Joining me today are Commissioners Cronzer, Brown, Gisselman, Slack, and Forni. Please, at this time, make sure that all your electronic devices are on soft or on silent. First item of business, joining me also Commissioner Bender. First item is to approve the actions from the meeting of April 23, 2014. I may have a motion to approve those. A second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Posed? Okay, those are approved. Our next item on the agenda is to sort out the agenda. There was the green agenda you may have found on the table outside the door there. We'll go through the six items one by one and see if we will put them on our consent agenda, which we'll be passing them as recommended by staff in those green agendas, or discuss them, which is if you want to talk about either disagreeing or wanting to modify the staff recommendation. So, item number one is the Maryland Apartments at 1346 LaSalle Avenue. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation? Anyone on one? If not, that will go on the consent agenda. Item number two is Huss Center Expansion, 2120 Park Avenue and 2111 Oakland Avenue. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number two? If not, that also goes on consent agenda. Item number three is Red Cricket Acupuncture at 4816 Nicolet Avenue South. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to? Okay, we have, we'll put that on discussion. Item number four is Verizon Wireless, MINC True Light, 4,200 West River Parkway. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number four? If not, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Item number five is Broadway Resource Recovery Proposed Building Replacement at 11122nd Avenue North. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number five? If not, we'll put that on consent. And item number six is 1620, at 1618 through 20 West Lake Street and 2915 James Avenue South. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation? Okay, we will put that in the discussion agenda as well. So, what I have is two items for discussion, for hearing and discussion. That's item four and item six. I'm three, sorry, three and six. And items for consent, one, two, four, and five. I may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Okay, we have no committee the whole report at this time, so we can move to the public hearings. No items to be continued, so I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That's on items number one, two, four, and five. Again, anyone wishing to speak on those items? Anyone? Okay, I may have a motion to approve those items as recommended by staff. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Posed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. We will move on to our first item for discussion, which is item number three, Red Cricket Acupuncture at 4816 Nicolet Avenue South.
The overhead projector is new since I've come back to present a planning commission, so hopefully all my overheads work. As you know, the application that's before you is for the property at 4816 Nicolet Avenue South. This is an application for a change of illegal non-conforming use. And the application is to allow a clinic and a sports and health facility related uses, so basically an acupuncture clinic with associated uses in lieu of the existing office use. The property is Zoned R1, and as you know, commercial uses are not typically allowed in residential districts. The property is about 6,000 square feet in size. It's designated as urban neighborhood in our comp plan. And the property is located along Nicolet Avenue, which is a community corridor in two parcels south of the southwestern boundary of the neighborhood commercial node that's located at 48th Street West and Nicolet Avenue. And just a reminder, the community corridors typically support limited commercial uses or uses, excuse me, that are frequently concentrated in neighborhood commercial nodes. And of course, proposed commercial uses are usually evaluated based on their impacts to residential character. Oh, good, it does. It's nice and sleek now. Okay, so I have a map that shows the property in question. It's highlighted here. And again, that's addressed as 4816, but it does have frontage on both Nicolet and on Rustic Lodge West. Just for context purposes, as I mentioned before, it's just outside the boundaries of the neighborhood commercial node that's located at 48th and Nicolet. I do have a map that shows the distinct boundaries of that. And the subject property, again, is outside of those boundaries, but it's highlighted on your screen there. Putting back up the map, if you're familiar with this area, you do know that there's a mixture of uses that are located in the immediate vicinity. Across the street, there's an OR1 zone parcel that's a dental office that the planning commission viewed a couple of years ago. Again, this is the subject parcel. It was originally constructed as a YMCA in 1950. There is a single-family residential use heading to the north. And then on the corner of 48th and Nicolet on this side, it's basically some various commercial uses. As you cross over Rustic Lodge West, there is a surface parking lot that's located there, and there's also a church with daycare services that's located in that vicinity. Again, kitty corner, there are some residential uses. And as you go back into the neighborhood, of course, there are residential uses there as well. Across Nicolet, there's a multifamily apartment building. There's additional commercial uses that go from that parcel up to the corner. Again, the dental office, and then some additional residential uses to the south. So that's just sort of a context. This is the building. As previously noted, it does have frontage on both Rustic Lodge West and as well on Nicolet Avenue. The principal entrance to the building actually faces Rustic Lodge West, but the property, again, is addressed off of Nicolet. These are just some additional pictures that show a little bit of context to the building. This is, I had, this is probably the best elevation that shows what the building looks like along Nicolet. So clearly, the principal entrance to the building is located off Rustic Lodge West. And this is a site plan that I'll put up. Okay, that looks good. Again, this is Nicolet Avenue. This is Rustic Lodge West. This is the principal entrance to the building as part of the proposed improvements for the change in use. They are proposing to locate an 80 accessible ramp on the property as well, because currently there are steps that lead to that principal entrance. There are no other exterior modifications that are proposed to the building at this I think you should have received a bunch of emails that I received from neighbors, and I believe they're here to speak to many of the issues, so I will let them do that. But there were many valid points that were brought up during that discussion about the fact that it does face Rustic Lodge West, it's adjacent to residential uses. But again, this building was constructed in 1950 originally as a YMCA, and according to the city and the county records, it was sold in 2006 and has been used for an office use since that time. Some of the other points that are listed, again, in the correspondence that I received from the neighborhood, was that Rustic Lodge West is actually a one-way coming out to Nicolet, and there's only parking allowed on one side of the street. So there are concerns about how this clinic, given the fact that the building has grandfather parking rights, will accommodate parking. As I note in the background of the staff report, however, I think it's important to note that currently acupuncture, this acupuncture clinic is actually located in this building right here that's within the node. And so the applicant will speak to this a little bit more, but she does have her business currently located in that building. I think it's been for approximately four years, and she's looking to acquire the property instead of leasing the property that she currently is in and relocating her business. We are supporting the application that's before you. In the background of the staff report, we talk about the different types of uses that are in the neighborhood and the fact that we feel like it will have some similar impacts to the use that currently exists within the building. I believe some of the neighbors have differing opinions of that, and so they'll speak to that. They're concerned, again, about the traffic that could be generated and the fact that there'd be potential parking, given the entrance to the facility along Rustic Lodge West. There is no additional parking that's required. Again, it's grandfathered, and there are no additional changes that are proposed at this time to the actual building itself. There's also, in the findings, in talking with the applicant, there will be a total of six practitioners that would work within the building, but their schedules are staggered, and they would all work less than 40 hours a week. They also mentioned in their submittal materials that there'd be a total of approximately 80 individuals that would come to the site over the course of a traditional week. And they will have hours traditionally from Monday through Friday, which would sync up with the office as well as an occasional Saturday. I'm going to close here. I did, again, recommend that you support this application, subject to the conditions that are listed in the staff report, talking about attaining, of course, the applicable building permits, a sign permit should they change out the face of that existing sign that's located along Nicolet, screening the trash receptacles that currently are located along Nicolet, as well as screening the air conditioning units that are also located along Nicolet. So I will close there, and I can take questions.
We do have a question from Commissioner Lipke here.
Sure.
Mind, can you tell me a little bit about why there's no required parking for this application?
Sure. The building was originally constructed, as I said, in 1950 as a Y, and then it's been used as an office since. And so with the change to a clinic-type use, there's no increase in parking that's required. So there's, it never had parking from either of those other two previous uses, and this use doesn't require additional parking.
It's like grandfather rights, isn't it?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Slack?
How many current parking stalls do they have in their current location?
They don't have any visitor parking that's provided for them, their lease tenant space. She has mentioned to me that there is a space that she utilizes as the owner of the facility.
Great, thank you.
The response was that there's no off-street parking for her actual tenants within that building along Nicolet. It's just one for the actual practitioner herself.
Any other questions, staff, at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. I'd like to hear first from the applicant, if she has any comments on this application. Come on up and give your name and address for the record, please.
I am Critten Burnston with Ads at Architecture. We're representing the owner, Joy Thomas of Red Cricket Acupuncture. Joy, as Becca stated, is currently three doors down at 4808 Nicolet. She's been there six years, and she has a thriving, growing business, and she wants to expand somewhat and invest in the neighborhood by buying the property. She loves the neighborhood. She cares very much what the neighbors think. Her son goes to school across the street at the daycare. I want to bring up the point that she currently does not have parking. Her clients park on the street, on Nicolet and 48th, and that is the intention when she moves. Since she has heard from some of the neighbors, she has decided to put on her website and have the receptionist say to clients that she would like them to only park on Nicolet Avenue South. There will be the existing traffic from her current clinic, and as she expands and hires a few more people, some additional traffic. She has projected 80 clients a week, which is about, she's Monday through Saturday, so that's about 15 a day. And Joy can speak a little bit more as to the nature of her business. But we feel this should be approved because it won't bring a lot more traffic, and she's already in a neighborhood that has quite a bit of commercial. And then, Joy, did you want to say anything about your business?
Well, currently, I've occupied this space for the last six years. I feel that my business has been really strongly supported by the community, and for me, it's really important that moving to another space, it would not strongly impact the neighborhood. And so I would be more than happy to work with people in the neighborhood that have concerns. I do believe that parking is the biggest challenge, and I believe that I can encourage my patients to park on Nicolet only, and I'm hoping that that would lessen the impact on the people that live on Rustic Avenue.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. Commissioner Lipke here, then Commissioner Slack.
What are your proposed hours of operation?
They would vary, but for the most part, it would be nine to five. There would be a few nights a week where we would be open until eight. That wouldn't be everyone. It would only be probably one or two practitioners. And when it says 80 patients a week, again, it's not everyone at once. It would be maybe two or three people, maybe four people at a time each hour.
But most of your traffic would be during the business day when other people are gone?
Definitely. Yeah, so the evening hours, it would probably be maybe one practitioner working until then. No one really wants to work that late, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that was Commissioner Gisselman?
Yes, thank you. Just to be clear, so you're going from one practitioner presently and growing to a potential of six? Is that right?
Yeah, there would be, there would be four practitioners in my group, and then renters, so two practitioners that would be sharing the space.
And so if you anticipate 80 potential clients a week with this new expansion, what is your, what is your current, I guess, client load before expanding to six?
Right now, I'm around 30 to 40 a week.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Now, is there, I know there are some other people who want to speak on this matter. Please come on up, whatever order, and give your name and address. We do have, I think, nine or so letters, so you can review briefly what you said there, but try to give us new information and be brief, please.
Thank you. My name is Jim McCarthy, and I live at 103 Rustic Lodge West. I've lived there for close to 40 years. My concern is with the parking. With the business growing, as she stated there, parking is definitely going to become an issue, having that business in that location. Parking on the nick of Avenue is even an issue. I walk by that with my dog almost every day, and during the weekdays, there's very few parking spots on our side of the block between Rustic Lodge and 48th Street. It's already an issue. It concerns me that this property has been, since its beginning, listed as a residence, and we continue, if this was approved, this would be the third inhabitant of that building that would be taking over this space that's supposed to be a house. And at what point do we say, let's preserve this neighborhood, let's preserve this residential street, and keep them all residences? So I would encourage the committee to decline this. One last point is if, and I don't know if this business, if they purchased this building, if they would be able to then sublet the building, divide it up into smaller pieces, and perhaps bring in an additional commercial business? And whether or not that would provide, require some type of improvement from this committee is a question I have. But again, this is a residential property, and I would encourage this committee to see it as a residential property and deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wanda Ackerman, and I live at 10 Rustic Lodge West. And just a little bit of backstory, because I know we keep saying that it's been used in this way before. And it was used as a business, is it Hadley, I believe, Hadley House, and that was a business. And it wasn't customer-facing, it wasn't, you know, a commercial business. People came in the morning, a few, and they left. And then when we say it was a Y before then, I think that gives the feeling like it was a YMCA like I think of, where there's, you know, all kinds of, things like yoga classes, things like, like all sorts of exercise classes, a gym. But that's not what it was. It was YMCA's, it was their office for camps. And so there weren't people coming and going at all. It was the same kind of business, which this is not as wonderful as I must say, I think it sounds, because I think it sounds great. But I don't think this is the spot for it. I know we say, I've heard here, that, you know, it has two entrances, one on Rustic Lodge and one on Nicolet. Well, it doesn't really. It has one entrance on Rustic Lodge. It has a window, I believe, on that Nicolet facing. It really is in a residential area. That is a wonderful place where you hear children playing, and it's a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood. And I wouldn't like to see, because if we're, if the business is going to be successful in this big space, they have to have a lot more than their current customers. Otherwise, it's not going to work. And that many, like twice, the number, 40 to 80, and then the classes were 15 people for yoga, 20 for the wellness classes. And if those worked well, I would think they could be at night soon. And my last point is, I think I heard it said that there'd be two renters there, and I'm concerned about what they'd be doing. So anyhow, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Come on up, give your name and address, please. We've heard about parking concerns and the opinion that this should be residential, not business.
Great. My name is Mary Lou Pease. I live at 15 West Rustic Lodge, across the street from the Y building. I should just, Wanda didn't identify that she lives directly next door to the facility, and she's also been there for a very long time. I've been at 15 for 40 years. Okay, we have many long-term residents. I also want to speak up for Pearl Johnson, who could not be here. She is the homeowner that is directly to the north, that one that you saw, that single-family home that is sandwiched in between the Y building and the commercial space. She has a beautiful single-
We got a letter from her, thank you.
You got a letter? Okay, so you know about Pearl, and she's been there 54 years. Our concern, my biggest concern, you've heard about the parking, it's a Zoned Residential. We've been asked to accede to a variance before, and what I get from the gist of all of this is that somehow, once we had one variance, well, it's like a fait accompli that we're, okay, that's it for Rustic Lodge, that we're just going to have this, and it's a de facto rezoning of that property from residential to commercial, and we really, really do not want to see that. This is a block with many, many children. It's a very solid residential block. It is not commercial in any way. And the Hadley House that was down there, I mean, we hardly even knew they were there. You'd see, you'd see some people go in in the morning, and they'd come out at 5 o'clock, 3:00 or 4:00, and it was definitely not something where we were going to be having people coming and going. So just the idea that somehow we've got this de facto rezoning of our, this property at the end of our block that would sandwich these homeowners that are immediately adjacent to it, I think it really degrades the value of their properties, and I would just, the other thing is that this is 4816 Nicolet, in all the 40 years I've lived there, it's never been called 4816 Nicolet, it's for West Rustic Lodge. So it's not a Nicolet Avenue property. And I think we were all very surprised when we got the notice about this, because we were trying to figure out what the heck building they were talking about. So we really strongly suggest that you deny this variance, and that if we have to have some kind of a business in there, it should not be one with customer-facing, with retail clients coming and going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any.
Pat Nickerbacher, 18 West Rustic Lodge. I've been there 40 years. Not to reiterate everything everyone else has said, my one concern is the fact that it's a very narrow street. And at least two, three times a week, you see somebody come up off Nicolet the wrong way up Rustic Lodge. There's many children on that street, and you're going to get these people who think they're going to park on Nicolet Avenue, they're coming to the clinic or whatever, and they'll turn up on Rustic Lodge. So we're going to get this additional traffic back and forth, and the street is very narrow. And try and drive the street in the winter, and you'll see there's just, it's just, it's just not the place for a business.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Come on up, please. Oh, I'm sorry, you've already done your bit, unless we have a question of you. We'll see if some of the Commissioners have questions of you on that. Okay, I will close the public hearing and hear from Commissioners. There is just one application for the expansion of a non-conforming use. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Brown?
I'll start things off with a motion, and I'll move that we approve the change of non-conforming use with the six stated conditions.
Okay, do I have a second on that? You have a second on that? Okay, moved and seconded, so that's here for discussion. Did you want to make some more comments on that, Commissioner Brown?
I can, very quickly. Overall, I think the finding we have to make is that this proposed use isn't more intense than the previous or existing use. And I think it's really an analogous use of the property, particularly when you consider that the business is already located a very short distance away and the proximity to the commercial node. I'm not too concerned about an increase in vehicle traffic or parking. And I think also the fact that Rustic Lodge is a one-way street in the eastbound direction really would discourage customers from using that street.
Okay, Commissioner Gagnon?
Thank you, and I think this is a question for staff. So this not being my, far from any expertise I have, when there is a variance, like they asked, why would it then become that we are considering the previous use when a new owner needs to get a different variance, right? Or-
Actually, it's a change in non-conforming use.
Change in non-conforming, okay, we'll see. So it's, it is still Zoned Residential?
Correct.
Okay. So wouldn't that be what we would prefer?
Well, the building's never been used technically as a full-fledged residential use, so-
Why isn't rezoned, then?
We have this situation across the city where we have non-conforming uses, or the use isn't necessarily synced up with what the actual underlying zoning is. Instead of rezoning this to a commercial-style use, where you could have different types of commercial usage that would go into this space without letting the neighborhood know, that's why it's been maintained as residential, so that we have the opportunities to evaluate each individual use as it changes out within the building. So it's not uncommon for us to see this, and frankly, it's another protection measure. In 2006, when this went through the process, there was, there was no change of non-conforming use at that time to allow that use to come in, and I'm not sure if there was a determination made that it was substantially similar to the previous office use, and it was allowed to go forward, but in this specific circumstance, it was, you know, the actual office use itself is different from what we deem to be a clinic use, which is an acupuncture clinic. So that's why it's before you, is that it's a different category within the zoning code.
Right. So how much then community feedback do you guys usually get before you say, okay, the community doesn't want this? If the point is to keep it a residential zoning so that you can get community feedback, how does that play in, then, to the decision?
Well, also, as part of the staff report, I mean, we're evaluating the comp plan policies that we have, and as I had mentioned at the top of the- And as I had mentioned at the top of the, the presentation, Nicolet is a community corridor, so it's an area where we do have intermittent businesses, you know, intermixed with different densities of, you know, residential zoning classifications. So there's, there's a mixture of uses, but a lot of, the intent for community corridors is to have those commercial uses congregated towards nodes, which, again, this parcel is, is two properties south. I don't believe there was ever a change of zoning on this property, it's always been residential, but it's never been used as a residential use. So maybe in that aspect, this could have been a good candidate for a rezoning. But, you know, as the applicant also, or as many of the people also mentioned, is what I also mentioned, is that the principal entrance to the actual structure is off of Rustic Lodge West, it's not off of Nicolet, despite the address.
Right. Because I, I mean, they mentioned the eighty clients, but, you know, twenty folks coming to a wellness class and fifteen folks coming to yoga classes four times a week in total, that's a lot of people. So that's a little different than having two or three folks, clients in and out every hour, so.
Yeah, and, and as, as they mentioned, that's not the principal focus, it's something that they've been looking to do maybe as an accessory to the actual clinic itself. But in terms of clarification, the, the way that I understand is it will operate as a traditional clinic, Monday through Friday, with the option of having a class on the weekends on Saturday. So, and, and that would be occasional. From the information that they supplied to us, that, that afternoon class, it's not different than the information in your packet, no.
Okay.
I'm not sure where that is in the packet, so.
Okay, Commissioner Lipke here.
Yeah, I, I didn't have a question for Becca, I just was going to confer with my fellow commissioners here. I was looking at this, because I am always intrigued when, when residents come forth, because I take, I take their concerns really seriously. But when I was looking at this, the fact that it's on Nicolet, which is not only a community corridor, but kind of a major one in the city, it kind of makes me think of the transit opportunities we have, and maybe there's a, a chance for the owner to strongly encourage her, her employees and people who will be using the other two offices to use public transportation, so that way for sure their vehicles are not on the street. But I look, and it, and it is a narrower street, but it's a one-way, so in reality, the drive aisle's wider than a traditional one would be. And then I, I was looking, because it was mentioned how so many of them don't have garages and need to park on the street, and I, I can only find a lack of curb cuts for two houses on the entire street. So it's not as though the opportunity to park off-street is not present. So I kind of think of this as the same as, as other neighborhoods in the city and other streets, where we see, everyone feels as though there's a parking crunch on their street. And so I kind of have to weigh that in terms of the balancing, the use of this building, which even a letter writer wrote, has, has never been, ever used as anything but, has never been used as a residential building. I kind of think, in terms of non-conforming uses, it seems pretty consistent with what was there in the past. So then I, I think on one hand, our hands are tied in terms of doing this based on parking, because it's a grandfathered issue, we can't really weigh in on it in that regard. So just balancing the things we can weigh in on, I'd have to say I'm leaning towards supporting staff recommendation, unless somebody can come up with a compelling reason why we would not.
Thank you. Other commissioners commenting? I don't see any. The motion before us is to adopt staff recommendation, and it's six conditions for the change in non-conforming use. If there are no other comments, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender, Brown, Forney, Gagnon, Gisselman, Kronzer, Lipke here, Slack. That's seven to one.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you very much for your testimony. We will move on now to item number six, wasn't it? Sixteen twenty, a staff report from Hillary DeVorek. Oh, she's trapped. Excuse me. Excuse me. You may proceed.
Thank you. I mean, I was, I don't know how much of a presentation you would like, because we had recommended this for consent, and there is somebody here in the audience that wanted to discuss it, so I don't know if you'd want to ask the questions.
Sure. Did you have a particular concern you wanted discussed?
Three particular concerns.
Three, okay, well, let's hear a brief report, then.
Okay. So this is a project known as sixteen twenty, and it's a mixed-use development. There are three properties in question, sixteen eighteen and twenty West Lake Street, and then twenty-nine fifteen James Avenue South. And there are three residential buildings on the site, two of them have been converted to commercial uses, all three would be demolished as part of this project moving forward. What's being proposed is a three-story mixed-use building. The first two floors of the building would be commercial in nature, and the third floor then would be six residential units. On the ground floor, there is also eighteen parking spaces, one for each of the residential units, and then twelve for the different tenants within the building. And the applicants, I should say, are also going to be two of the three tenants in the building, so more office in nature than actual retail. The use, or the applications done tonight, there is a conditional use permit to increase the height of the building, as it's located in the Shoreland Overlay District. And then also the skylights are taller than the permitted height in the C1 district. There are variances of the east interior side yard setback, and then of the north rear yard setback. There is a loading space variance from one to zero, and then this site plan review. And we are recommending approval of all of those applications. And just to show you the building.
Is it substantially the same as, as we saw in Committee of the Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I don't need to show you, then. Okay, I'll take your cue. So yes, it is substantially similar to what you saw. I don't think there actually were any changes. And we do have a standard condition for the CUP, and then eight different conditions of approval for site plan review, and they are explained in that section of the report. So I'm here if there's any questions.
I don't see any, okay. I'll now open the public hearing, I'll hear from the applicant if you have anything to say, or you can be available for questions, whatever your preference is.
I can be available.
Okay, we'll see if there are any. I'll open it to anyone else, come on up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good day. I want to take this opportunity to thank the commission for allowing me to voice my concerns. My name is Todd Myers, M-E-Y-E-R-S, and I reside at twenty-nine fifteen James Avenue South. I have three main areas of concern, one procedural, one environmental, and then just some personal concerns. You'll forgive me for not being able to recall all of my high school civics lessons, but I, I wonder, it sounds like there's been an awful lot of negotiating going on already, and it even says here that your decision has essentially been made. So if the, you know, who, who is advocating for people against? I mean, how does that work? It sounds like a lot has been going on, and once you've decided, well, let's go ahead and do this, oh, by the way, maybe we'll let people know. And as far as the environmental concerns, there is a residential development a few blocks to the west of us, that I seem to recall having read that they got in trouble for building too close to the water table. And I, I, I don't understand how a project that large could get that far along without having looked into that. And then just personally, you know, I, I know nobody cares, and you can't fight City Hall and all that, but, you know, I went to college, and, you know, I have a day job, but I'm an artist, and that neighborhood is perfect for those of us who, who, who don't have a car. I keep reading about how we're all concerned about creating density in the city and more transportation. Transportation for everybody, or just at, at the interest of a developer who sees an opportunity? And, you know, I, I realize that because I went to art college, I'm probably going to die poor, but, I mean, where do the regular people go? I mean, what considerations are there in any of these projects for anybody other than anyone who could afford to pay $2,000 a month for an apartment? And, you know, it's, it's like, this, these, these, these decisions haven't been approved, but it sounds like you're leaning towards it, and so what happens if, if this is denied? I've received a sixty-day notice to vacate my property. What if it's denied? Is it still, sorry, Ringo, hit the bricks? You know, and I, I feel like there's a lot that has been taken into consideration without the input of the people that it directly affects. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Lipke here? Do you want to say?
Yeah, I do have some questions. So are you, are you saying that you are, believe that this project will cause you to be evicted from your property?
I've already received a sixty-day notice, all of us have.
Okay, and is this your first time hearing of this project?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, I can't, I can't help with that matter, but I can say that what you see in your packet is staff recommendation.
Packet?
There's a packet that's available outside. Hopefully, they're still unavailable. And in that, so when you, when you think that we've already made our decision, please rest assured we have not. What, what, what you see in there, where it's recommended for approval, is staff has reviewed it to see if it complies with zoning codes and ordinances, and has made a recommendation to us. It's nowhere set in stone, so I just want to, you can fight City Hall.
Well, that's, that, again, just speaks to my concern, what if this project is denied? Do I still, am I still required to vacate the premises?
That, I don't know. I don't, that would be up to the building owner, I would assume. I'm not a lawyer.
I'm pretty sure I've made enough trouble for them already, so.
So, but I did want to just quickly let you know that we do take your concerns seriously. And the things that we're allowed to look at today, you have that green packet from outside? So you see under number six, there's A, B, C, D, and E. Those are the things that this body is charged with dealing with. So the issues that we are allowed to rule on have to fall under those five categories. So if, maybe you want to take just a minute and take a look and see if you have specific concerns related to the use, or whether or not the setbacks are an issue for you, or your community. I can't weigh in on what your landlord or building owner does with the building you live in, but I can weigh in on these five things. And that's all we're legally allowed to weigh in on.
Who makes the recommended motion?
Staff, city, city staff. And then, and then we're, we're people who just live in the city with various different backgrounds, and, and then we, we take a look at what staff wrote, and what's in the packet, and what public testimony we have. And we're allowed to only rule on these five things. So, so I think you might want to just take a sec and see if you have concerns in any of those five areas, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot at this minute.
You're not putting me on the spot. It's just that I'm not a lawyer, and I can't afford one.
And, and we, we will get in trouble with lawyers if we, if we don't have findings on these five things. So I think we share that concern.
Well, assuming that I'm opposing these things because I want to stay living there, not have the buildings knocked over, I would have some problem with the size of the buildings, how close to the sidewalks they are, how they're, a lot of people, I don't mean to belittle anybody else's concerns, but everything that I've heard in here today has been parking, 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 and this place is going to make all kinds of space for parking, and where, where is it going to come from? I mean, there's three of us who occupy that residence, and none of us has a car, and even if we did, it would have to be put on the street. And that's, those streets are packed morning, noon, and night, because otherwise, if you park on Lake Street, you have to pay for it.
Did you want to take a minute to sit down, and we can-
I don't know.
No, okay. I just don't want you to feel you have to rush.
And I guess part of what I just said speaks to B about the extension of the-
Sounds like maybe you're addressing variance D in regard to the parking, reducing it from one to zero.
Right, and all this, all this business about walls and heights and stuff like that, I mean, what, what are those designed for? Is it just for looks, or to keep people out?
The wall heights in the zoning code?
Number B.
Well, number B is in regard to the-
Oh, sorry, you're right, that's the setback issue.
It seems to me that the issue that you're concerned with is, is not the one that's in front of us today. We're not in charge of evicting you or not evicting you, it's what the new building proposed for the site-
Right.
-and how that fits there. And we're perfectly happy to hear your comments on the site plan review, how it fits on the site, the height, respect to other things, the closeness to other yards, and a loading dock. So, let's see, Commissioner Forney, did you, did you have more questions, Commissioner Lipke here?
No, not yet.
Well, I'd just like to also state, I can't stress this enough, if, if previous property built in the neighborhood was allowed to continue building too close to the water table, if not beneath it, I mean, you all seem like really smart people, I'm sure this whole building is full of geniuses, but how, what assurance will be made that the same problem isn't going to occur in this project?
Maybe, maybe the applicant could address that one.
Actually, the assurance is that the, the parking in this case actually won't be underground, like the, the parking block to the, to the west, which caused the, the issue with the water table. So in this case, the, the parking and all activities are either at grade or above.
Okay, let's see, Commissioner Forney, did you have a question of Mr. Myers? No, okay. Did you have more questions of Mr. Meyer, anyone? Or do you have more comments?
No, I guess that's about all I have.
Okay. Do we want to hear from the applicant about the water table? Is that a concern? I think we discussed that before at the Committee of the Hall. You are right, we have discussed it at a different session, but-
Maybe the applicant just wants to speak to some of the resident's concerns.
They can come up, I have not closed the public hearing. You may, you may sit down, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Keller with Peterson Keller Architecture. And, you know, first, I guess, I apologize, this is the first year hearing of it, we've been working with the neighborhood for maybe over six or seven months now, presenting our plans and to, to the neighbors and asking for their approval.
I do not discuss that, you talk to us.
I, I feel badly that, that people weren't informed, it was my understanding that all the residents were informed of the-
Please talk to us.
Okay, sorry. So I, I think, I just want to say, you know, obviously, my office is, is there, I live in the neighborhood, and I think this is going to be a great development on this spot. We are not, we have no basement or anything below grade, so there's not any water issues, although it seems that the water is quite a ways below our building in any event. And we have the approval both of Echo and East Isles Neighborhoods for the, for the project, and we worked through several rounds with them, so we tried to get community support. It's important to me, having grown up in the neighborhood and living there now and having a business there now.
Let's see if there are any questions of, of you on any technical matters? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this? If not, I will close the public hearing. We have five items, starting a CUP for building height, three variances, and a site plan review. Have motions, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, I'll move approval of items six, A through E.
A through E, as, as recommended with the-
With, with the stated conditions.
Okay. Do I have a second? Moved in second to approve staff recommendation. Any discussion? Commissioner Forney.
Lake District being impacted. I know this is a area that at least has a precedence for having a higher height than the Shoreland Overlay. It's just something that's very near and dear to me as a park board commissioner, and I will need to vote against it.
Okay, other comments? Commissioner Lipke here?
Yeah, I, I will be supporting the motion, but I, I do want to let you know that it's, I'm not, not sympathetic to what your situation is. It's just the, what your property owner decides to do with the billings out of our purview, so unfortunately, we can only rule on the things we have before us. But I will encourage you in the future to get involved in whatever organization, neighborhood organization you land in, and then maybe this won't happen again. I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you. I want to thank you for coming today, and I'm sorry that this has happened as well. There's an organization called Home Line, which is an advocacy organization that helps renters with legal issues, and they can provide you with free legal assistance. It's called Home Line. Their phone number I can give you. Or you know what, you can talk with my aide, who's Ben Samoji, he's sitting over there. So Ben will help you. I believe that anyone can evict for six, with sixty days' notice. I think we have pretty lenient renter protection laws, honestly, but they can probably help connect you to services or, or help. I do want to also just sort of address some of the things you said, which I think you highlight a lot of things about how we do outreach about development projects in the city, and we really rely on neighborhood organizations who don't always do the best job. A lot of them are volunteer-run, or if they have other- A lot of them are volunteer-run, or if they have other limitations. Engaging all of the people that live in the neighborhood, and it's something that I think a lot about, because I hear from folks like you who maybe don't even know they have a neighborhood organization representing them. So I think it's something we have to solve in the long term in our city, to make sure that we're hearing from everyone's voices early on in the process. Because a lot of the things that you raise, wanting less parking, wanting more housing affordability, aren't necessarily the things that the folks who were at the table when this project was being designed were voicing. And so it's just an issue that we have to deal with as we go forward in building projects in our city. So anyway, Ben can help you connect with Home Line.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? If not, clerk, please call a roll on A through E on item six.
Bender.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Forney.
No.
Gagnon.
Aye.
Gusselman.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Lipke here.
Slack.
Aye.
Seven to one.
Okay, the staff recommendation is approved, and that concludes our business for today. Mr. Wittenberg, any announcements?
Commissioners, just a reminder to don't show up at the Committee of the Whole meeting until five o'clock on Thursday.
Five o'clock. This is the exciting click meeting, public hearing, our annual event.
Happy Cinco de Mayo, by the way.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us this evening.